Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners meeting for July 20th, 2021. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Opter, Bartlett, Best,
Here.
Duffy, Lazara,
Here.
Deputy Director James,
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here.
Director, for the record, County Commissioner Opter and Bartlett are excused for this meeting.
Yeah, and could Mr. Clerk, County Council was is in Princeton. He had a mediation today, so he's not going to be here. I know Deputy County Council in the Dej Allwaters is supposed to be on the line. I don't know.
She's she's on, Tony.
She's on now. Okay, great.
Yes.
Perfect. I wasn't sure. Hi, the Dej.
She's muted.
Very good.
There you go.
I was having computer trouble. I apologize.
There you are. Okay. Did you do the announcement of the Open Public Meeting Law? I lost my place. All right, please stand for the invocation.
Actually, Director, if I could just do the late the announcement of the Open Public Meetings Act first.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location included in the annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation.
Oh, God, bless for thy people by thy power, rules over them in love. Be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Commissioner Duffy, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Honor Director, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, free and just. Thank you, Director.
Please remain standing for to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and those who have died from COVID-19, especially the over seventeen hundred and forty-two residents of Passaic County. Thank you. Ever motion to approve the minutes of June 22nd, 2021?
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call. Roll call.
Sorry, County Commissioners Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Proclamations, we have none to be approved, but we I'd like to mention that the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners wishes to congratulate Patrick Lazaro on his retirement from the Board of Social Services and also congratulate Tony Di Simone on his retirement from the Board of Social Services. They've served the county for a very long time. I wish them well in their retirement. Administrators' report.
Thank you, Director.
Director, Director, Director. All right, so this is where we're going to add the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the Lazara is going to read the proclamation to record and comments from Janice Sangle, and then we're going to have to add add that as a late starter to pro.
Okay, you only told me three minutes ago, Loaf. I apologize.
Okay.
Lieutenant Lazara?
The proclamation first. Whereas on July 26, 1990, President George H. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disability Act, ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas this legislation established a cure, clear, and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions, increasing full participation in community life. However, the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. Whereas, on the 31st anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, Passaic County Board of Chosen Commissioners, County Commissioners celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic, a resolution adopted on May 21, 1997, created the Advisory Council on Disability to advocate for individuals with disabilities. And whereas the Advisory Council on Disability was formed to promote the inclusion and empowerment of people with disabilities within Passaic County and to advise the Board of County Commissioners on ADA issues that impact the quality of life for people with disabilities. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that it does hereby reaffirm its commitment to work toward full ADA compliance in Passaic County. And now I'm going to read some of the remarks, the comments by Janice Sangle, ADA Chairwoman, Passaic County Advisory Council on Disability. In her words, "On behalf of the Passaic County Advisory Council on Disability and as Chairwoman to the ADA Committee, I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for pledging to recommit to full implementation of the ADA by adopting a resolution honoring the 31st anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The ADA was the world's first comprehensive declaration of equality for people with disabilities. It was a collaborative effort of Democrats, Republicans, the legislature, and the executive branches, federal and state agencies, and people with and without disabilities. There are a total of five titles covered under the ADA. I will address titles one through four. Title one, employment. It helps people with disabilities access the same employment opportunities and benefits available to people without disabilities. Title two, state and local government prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability by public entities such as state and local government agencies. Title three, public accommodations and services operated by private entities. That prohibits places of public accommodation from discriminating against individuals with disabilities. Title four, telecommunications requires telephone and internet companies to provide a nationwide system of interstate and intrastate telecommunications relay services that allows individuals with hearing or speech disabilities to communicate over the phone. Disabilities are an unavoidable part of the human life, veterans injured in service to their country, survivors of accidents and illnesses, children born with disabilities, and our elderly. According to the CDC, sixty-one million people in the United States live with a disability. That's one out of every four adults. How would I, as a person with a disability, help in reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting my efforts to reach full ADA compliance? One, I would educate myself about the ADA by going on the internet to www.ada.gov or take free online training webinars on the ADA ABA at www accessesibilityonline.org. Two, if you're a person with a disability and you come across an issue that inhibits your access, speak up and let your issue be known because people are not mind readers. Three, under Title Two of the ADA, each state or local government must have an ADA coordinator working on accessibility issues. In Passaic County, our ADA coordinator is Ken Herman. Each state and local government must do self-evaluations and develop transition plans working toward ADA compliance. Four, I would also check with your local government to see if you have an active ADA committee working on identifying issues which would possibly impede one's access within their community. Get involved and join. In Passaic County, that committee is located within the Passaic County Advisory Council on Disability. Five, businesses also businesses also have an obligation under Title Three of the ADA. I would encourage business owners to view the ADA's website and then take a look at your business and see what ways you might be able to improve access for people with disabilities. Six, for individuals who have disabilities, check with your city, town, or municipality in the state of New Jersey to see if they adopted an ordinance that waives a building permit fees solely for the purpose of accessibility for individuals with disabilities when retrofitting your home for accessibility. Together, we can make a user-friendly, accessible environment for everyone at every stage of our lives. Thank you, Janice. I think that you gave some really good advice for people, and I hope that they can access it and know what what they need to know about people with disabilities.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazara. All right. Moving on to the administrators' report.
Director, so so if we could just do a motion to add the G3, the ADA proclamation, and then then approve the proclamations.
That motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy. Second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. That was the motion to add?
Yes. Now we need a motion for approve G1 through G3.
To make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy. Second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Now the administrators' report.
Third time. Charmed. Charmed. First, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Duffy. He became a grandfather again today. His beautiful daughter Erin gave birth to a bouncing baby boy this morning. I believe they're going to name it Anthony Joseph. At least at least we hope they are. But more importantly, both mother and baby are doing well. So congratulations, Commissioner, and our best to to Erin.
Thank you so much.
Why don't we all just say it's the name, and then he has no choice?
Yeah.
Thanks, Terry.
Regardless of what his name is, we're going to call him Anthony Joseph.
I think most of the commissioners here have grown up with Erin over the years, so they know what kind of personalities she can be. She's a great mother. She's looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
One other piece of housekeeping for the for the record, July 1, we sold county college bonds. There were three bidders. The successful bidder was Huntington Securities, Inc., at a rate of 1.375. So it's a it's a an excellent rate. And again, a lot due to the county's improved financial status and our and our double A bond rating. So with that, I will introduce Dr. Gun Gill for our COVID update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm back. Whenever Micah is ready. Things are improving, doing much better. All right, so welcome again, and I'll be brief, giving you an update because we have a lot of good news. Next slide, Micah. Okay, although we're up to 493, we do have many variants identified in Passaic County, but none of them have been the Delta variant, which I know you're hearing a lot about. Next slide. Since since our last meeting, we had 403 new cases in Passaic County. Yes, for some reason, I'm seeing deaths. We have, I don't know what's going on with my screen, so I'll use my notes here. Since our last meeting, we have 11 more deaths to to announce. As of yesterday, we had another one today, so we're up to 1,743 deaths. The good news is that even though you're hearing that there are new cases, the the numbers are still very low, so we're in a good, a very good place. Our positivity right now is 2.32, and we have not had since our last meeting any more children with the multi-system inflammatory syndrome. So that's good. Next slide, please. This is what the epic curve looks like, and as you can see at the very far right, those represent the cases that we're having now. So in comparison to the entire pandemic, you can see that we're having a lot less cases, and the reason for that is so many of our residents are protected by receiving the vaccines. The cases that we're seeing are cases in people that have not been vaccinated. So the vaccination is working, and it's really affecting our epic curve, as you can see in this slide. Next slide, please. Okay, this slide is just a comparison. The seven-day average of positivity and the the graph on the left is the entire pandemic, and you can see that peak at the very beginning, it's when things were going crazy. The the right-hand side, let me just, so back to the left-hand side, you can see the number of cases were, you know, the the positivity was in the 60s, whereas now that's a small section where you could see that the unit of measurement is 2.5. So we're really, really in a very, very good place here in Passaic County. Next slide, please. All right, we vaccinated over 60,500, we've administered over 60,500 vaccines in in our clinic, the clinics that are run by Passaic County, and our positivity rate, sorry, our adherence to second doses is very high at 95%. Therefore, most people who were vaccinated in our clinics come back for their second vaccine. In the center, that that graph shows that the the residents who are 65 and older, they've been fantastic, they have gotten most of them. I think it's around 80-something percent of that population have been vaccinated, and really that's who we, as you know, targeted, particularly in the first days of the of the vaccination program. Next slide, please. All right, this is a busy slide, but it just it's showing you, because I wanted to know in every municipality, how many people have Passaic County Board of Chosen Board of Commissioners commissioned to be vaccinated. So these are raw numbers of individuals in each municipality that our clinics have vaccinated. So I just wanted you to get an idea that, for example, most of the people are from within the county are from the city of Clifton, followed by the city, the township of Wayne and Patterson City, but every municipality has been touched by our program of vaccinations. Next slide, please. All right, this is a breakdown by race again for our clinics. Next slide. So this is a different kind of slide. This is new information. As you know, we're all over the place trying to get the people who were not able to be vaccinated at our big site. So starting on the left, we have been to 17 corporate sites, corporate citizens, 17 locations, and we have vaccinated over set, we have administered over 700 vaccines at those sites. We have also vaccinated in other areas and with homebound, and over 2,400 people received their vaccinations in that way. So I think that that's really a really a good thing, because you get to see that even though we're not having the big site site at Models, we're in the community, we're doing these microsites, and we're helping to a number of people as well. The the recent businesses that we have gone to are the YMCA in Patterson, Hayden Corporation in Wayne, and Sandy Alexander in Clifton. And the pie chart shows the homebound who's getting vaccinated at home, and far and wide, 77% of those we are vaccinating at home are age 65 and over. And you probably are wondering how come we are also vaccinating younger people at home, but you know, that proclamation that that Commissioner Lazara read speaks to who else we're vaccinating. There are other people, younger people who are Americans with disabilities, and we provide the service to them as well. Next slide, please. And this is just a representation of our clinics and numbers of people that we vaccinated there. Next slide is also an out. Yeah, it's just showing what kinds of vaccines that people are are requiring. It's a little bit busy, but it just gives you a breakdown, first dose, second dose, and and all of the doses. Next slide, please. All right, this is an exciting slide, and this slide is is taken from the state dashboard, and on the right-hand side in the center, that 298,895 represents vaccinations in Passaic County, and it's really exciting, because if you remember, we started out with 267 was our number there. So we we're really doing very well. At the bottom of that, you're seeing fully vaccinated, again, another exciting number, over 260,000 of our residents have been vaccinated so far, which is really good news. Next slide. So this next slide we receive once a week from the governor's office, which is a breakdown from, I believe it's the NJIS, which is the New Jersey Immunization Website, and it shows you the breakdown by municipality of vaccinations. It's a long slide, but what we did on this slide compared 28 days ago and today. And the first of all, the exciting overall news is that there are only four municipalities that have not yet hit the 70% of the adult population being vaccinated. So that's really huge. The other piece I want to bring to your attention is that four municipalities have exceeded that for second dose, so complete protection. In other words, they've received a second dose of Moderna or Pfizer, or they've received that single dose of of J&amp;J. So that's exciting. The other piece of it I want to bring to your attention with especially the city of Passaic, city of Patterson, even Little Falls, and that is that with all of the the micro health education we're doing in the community, boots on the ground, we have been able to, with other partners, to change the trajectory of vaccination. So for example, on June 16, in the city of Patterson, 66% of the population had received one dose. And as of last Friday, the 14th, I believe it's Friday or Saturday, that number is 73%. So this is a huge leap in one month. And again, it's targeted to populations that need the help, not just the Passaic County Health, but all of our partners in the community are heading out there and trying to really explain to people the importance of getting vaccinated and dispelling myths that might be present in the community. Next slide.
Before you move on, Dr. Gun Gill, I just, you know, when I send this information out to everybody, I have been kind of putting a disclaimer about Little Falls Township, which you could really see is kind of an outlier throughout the county. You know, the numbers don't appear to be keeping pace with with even our urban centers. We believe, and and I've had a lot of conversations, both with the state and and Mayor Damiano, we really believe that it has to do with the population number that's being used. So obviously, the using census numbers, as you know, many of the
Students.
The students at MSU, the dorm rooms are located in Little Falls, and there's, I believe the total population is somewhere around $14,000, $14,000, 14,000 people. We believe that about 2,000 or 3,000 are are represent students who are no longer living in dorms through the COVID crisis. People weren't living in dorms last year, and so we believe that that's why those Little Falls numbers are off. We can't be 100% certain. The state has reassured me that the number of people vaccinated are correct. Obviously, they can only use population numbers that are available to them. But in recalculating those numbers, if if our assumption is correct, Little Falls would be in that 69% range. So again, I just think in fairness, because I don't want, and I know the mayor gets a a lot of questions about why their numbers are lower than everybody else's, and we really do believe that that it has to do with that population number. So I said, can't be 100% certain, but we really do believe that we are correct in stating that. So again, I just want to make sure the record is clear as to why people would look at Little Falls. You know, and again, I know Clifton is their health officer, so I don't want anybody to think that it's anything that Little Falls or Clifton is doing or not doing. I really do believe it's a it's a matter of numbers making it look like Little Falls is not keeping pace with everyone else in the county.
And also, and also to add to Mr. de Nova's explanation, when my epidemiologist removed the 3,500 or so students that are listed in in the census and recalculated, it is showing comparable to other municipalities that look like Little Falls. In addition, towards that end, I'm actually in discussion with Montclair State for dates that we're going to go to Montclair State to vaccinate students. So that's going to change the numbers and the rates. In addition, we had an our conversation today with the state. We discussed the fact that it's very difficult to get DOD data on people who, Department of Defense, so in other words, people who went into the military and so forth, that data for vaccinations are not necessarily available to us. And so they're still trying to, you know, gather additional data that might, I believe, affect the the numbers for Little Falls. But we're hoping that once the vaccination clinics begin, which they're going to happen in early to mid-August, both at Montclair State and William Patterson, FYI, and we're going to start seeing that number catching up to to the other municipalities. And in addition, because the state was not concerned about the number because of what we believe is the issue on this being an outlier, their target has not been specifically on Little Falls because they believe it's an outlier and doesn't reflect the work that's happening in Little Falls. Next slide, please. All right, so what's happening? What does it look like for for us in Passaic County? And so right now, we are at 78% of our adult population having been vaccinated at least with one dose, and 68% and sixty-eight percent are fully vaccinated. So that's really, we're really doing very well as a community and getting the word out on vaccinating our residents. Next slide, please. All right, so some updates. As you know, on June twenty-fourth, we had our last clinic at Models, and that was specifically supply and demand. There was not a demand for that big site. So we had to change and transition to other ways. We are testing and vaccinating at our health department. The testing, we're still working. We still have some kinks that we're working out with providers, but we are vaccinating here at the office currently. We have eleven to three every Thursday. People can contact the office, and we will provide them either Moderna or Johnson &amp; Johnson. We worked with the state at Camp for Camas, I think it's called, in West Milford. So once a week, I have staff there as well as state staff doing testing of the campers. It's a requirement for overnight camping right now that they're back, that they're tested at least once a week. And during that time, we bring information to them to bring in home and their backpacks to their parents regarding vaccinations. At the county fair, we're going to have in our tents the ability to vaccinate as well as test for COVID and the other things you see there. I know you're hearing a lot about a Delta variant. It is the dominant strain in New Jersey, but we do not have a documented case in Passaic County. Once that happens, of course, I'll report it to you, but we have not, we do not have that information. The New Jersey Department of Health created an ambassador program where a number of staff from the State Department of Health work with us here in Passaic County, a number of us, to target the municipalities that did not have seventy percent vaccination rates. And so we're really digging deep into it. We're having, for example, clinics at KUMAC we've done. I think on Thursday, we're going to be at, there is a Lieutenant Eastern event that's taking place at Rosa Parks Boulevard. We're participating in that. We've worked with the YMC, a number of people, where we're in the community, providing information, providing vaccination, answering questions to really move the dial. Next slide, please. And lastly, we have some upcoming clinics. Again, we're here on Thursdays, eleven to three. I'll have at least two nurses here providing vaccines free to anyone. If anyone knows of people who are homebound that need to be visited, contact the health department, and we will schedule them for vaccination at their own home. And the other ones are information on some of the sites that we're doing vaccinations at. Oh, maybe I'll share this. Shoprite of Passaic, their regular supermarket, as well as their liquor store, is in partnership with us, with North Hudson Community Action Committee, the state of New Jersey, and a number of other partners to provide vaccines on this Saturday and then in four weeks, another Saturday in the community, and the target there is the city of Passaic residents. So, you know, we're really excited about it, and we're really trying to make a difference in the community. Next slide, last slide, reminder that we still need to get the word out to get vaccinated and for people to still follow us as many protocols as they can to be safe, because it's not just COVID. It's any communicable disease that we are protected from if we just follow the handwashing and other guidances provided. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gungill. I have a question. First of all, let me preface what I'm about to say, that I'm a strong advocate for people to get vaccinated. Prior to myself getting vaccinated, my wife, we stayed away from everybody. We kept our distance. We stayed within our own cohort, nuclear family there. And then, once we got vaccinated, we relaxed that a little bit, but I still wear a mask when I go into a supermarket, Shoprite, Costco, or if I'm in an indoor area where there's a lot of people, I still wear the mask, just as a precaution. But how do you reconcile the fact that you take a sporting event, Yankee Stadium, Shea Stadium, and there's thirty, forty thousand people in the stadium, sitting shoulder to shoulder right next to each other? Everybody's having a great time. They all claim that they're vaccinated, which is fine. But yet, when an athlete tests positive, the athlete has to quarantine. I struggle with that. Somebody asked me that. I don't know what to tell them. How does that work? Like these kids in the Olympics, they work for how many years to get to where they're going? Many of them are vaccinated, but they test positive, and then they're unable to compete. And most of the time, most of the competition is singular, you know, by themselves, whether it's, you know, the gymnastics or things of that nature. How do you reconcile that contradiction?
Great question. So I, what I think is, I think those are issues of policies that people put into place. And I just think that it's a policy issue as opposed to a public health issue. Because, you know, you're making some good points. You have people that are spending a couple of hours next to each other. They're very vocal. They're, you know, opportunity to share, you know, viruses, bacteria, whatever. And then you're talking about people with, you know, non-contact sports, right? So I think those are policy issues, and perhaps those policies were developed during a time, let's say, three months ago, four months ago, when things were different, and perhaps they need to be looked at again. Because I agree with you. I don't, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't compute to me.
Exactly. And I think that is a problem that we're having in trying to convince people, especially people who haven't been vaccinated yet, that it's serious and they need to be vaccinated in order to sit in that crowd, if you will, at a sporting event, a concert, or whatever very populated event they go to. But then by the same token, one person gets it, and a person has to be quarantined. It just, I can't put my arms around that.
So Can I just, to go to Yankee Stadium, have you been to Yankee Stadium?
Not recently.
You have to have proof that you are vaccinated to get into the stadium. So everybody that you're seeing has shown their proof that they were vaccinated to get in, right? So assume that everybody's vaccinated, because you can't get in without it.
But I don't believe that that's the case anymore.
You don't believe that's the case?
I don't believe that you have to show a vaccination to get in.
When did they stop doing that? Well, that's really stupid on their part, if that's what they've done, right? But, and I hope that's wrong.
Early on, I know, early on, they segregated the people who were vaccinated. They segregated the people who weren't vaccinated and put them in a separate section of the stadium. Early on, that's what they did. I think they lifted that requirement.
I would say in the last month, month and a half.
Pardon?
I would say in the last month, month and a half.
Well, I think we opened up too early anyway. That's just my personal opinion. I know Dr. Gungill may disagree, but we are just not following, you know, it's not in Passaic County yet. It's the dominant virus in the state of New Jersey, but it's not in our county. So what do we do? Shut doors, and it's not here? I think that's naive if we think that it's not going to be here. And when you are vaccinated, you can be asymptomatic and carry that virus because it's extremely transmissible. And so, you know, that's when you're going to infect other people, especially young people who can't even get the vaccine yet. And it's killing young people. And all you have to do is look around the world where this is the dominant strain, and it is killing people left and right, and it's killing young people. So that's a concern, you know? And I, that's just my concern. I look at it maybe a different way, but.
But I think the county's doing a great job in terms of advocating vaccinations every chance that they get.
No, absolutely. I think we're better than most counties, and I give Tony and Dr. Gungill and her department all of the credit for that. I just worry about, as Biden said, this is now a pandemic of the unvaccinated. And I don't know how much more we can do. I think that we've made an effort. We've been into communities. We've got community leaders. I think we're doing a good job because you can see that every meeting, we have more people vaccinated in Passaic County. That's hard work on the part of our people who are out there in the trenches. And I think that's the only way out of this is vaccine. That's really what I think, and I think we're doing his best job that we could possibly do. I'm worried about the other because people are just naive about how bad this is. You know, you had a doctor from Arkansas get on TV trying to explain how everybody who's in that hospital, and it's packed, they're all now regretting that they didn't get the vaccine, and now they know they made a mistake. Well, you don't want to be in that position. It's not the flu, you know? It's just not the flu. It's a disease to get.
Very right, Bruce. Well, I mean.
I don't, Director, I don't know how we compare to other counties in terms of total population. You know, the goal has been seventy percent of the adult population of eighteen and over.
And we're good.
You know, as we're approaching three-hundred thousand people who have at least one vaccine, you know, we're at sixty percent of total population, which, you know, I think is great. And, you know, maybe that's one of the reasons why we haven't seen the Delta variant here yet. Commissioner James, that, you know, we'd be naive to think that we're not going to have a case of it. You know, this virus doesn't know borders. So, you know, it may happen. But I think overall, our health department and Dr. Gungill have done a great job of educating people of the benefits of getting vaccinated. And, you know, and obviously, it has slowed down from, you know, from January, February, March, April. But we are still seeing every week, three, four thousand people receiving vaccines. So, you know, hopefully, we're getting to that more skeptical population out there. Will it ever be a hundred percent? I'm sure it'll never be a hundred percent, but, you know, we're doing the best that we can.
I think people are seeing that this really is a more contagious strain of it. And I think people who refuse to be vaccinated are starting now to get worried that they're not vaccinated. So that message is getting out there, and I give a lot of credit to our own health department. We're targeting neighborhoods with people that are community leaders so that there's a trust factor that goes through it. And I think you've done a great job. That's the only thing that we got that, the only thing that'll change this pandemic is vaccinations. And that's the only way out of this.
And listen, credit where credit is due as well. I think, you know, Governor Murphy and particularly the First Lady, who has been involved in some of these programs of trying to get into communities that have lower vaccination rates. It's been successful. You know, the numbers don't lie, right? We see when they come in, whether it's been in Patterson or Passaic or anywhere else throughout the state of New Jersey, it works. So, you know, when you target and you educate, it's working. So is it taking, you know, longer than most of us would like? Yeah, maybe. But the point is, we're going to get there, and we're getting there as quickly as we can.
Okay, all right, very good.
That'll teach you to ask a question.
Hi, Dr. Gungill, are you done or?
I'm done. Whatever you need from me, I'm here.
Yes, as always. Thank you. Of course you are.
For that. That concludes my report, Director.
All right, any questions from the commissioners or anyone?
Oh, that was a good report. It really was. It's uplifting.
As you begin to move on to the next agenda item, which is the second reading of the bond ordinance, I will remind you, Director, that this requires five affirmative votes for adoption. I know we have two commissioners who are not here this evening, so that would require all those present voting in the affirmative in order to pass this ordinance.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I'll take a motion to suspend the regular order of business. Motion? Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by Deputy James. Roll call.
County Commissioner Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazar?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Okay, bond ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-five, the bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various election equipment by and in the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, appropriating ten million seven-hundred thousand, therefore, and authorizing ten million one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the costs thereof. I need a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-five.
I'll move it.
By Deputy James, second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioner Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazar?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes, does anyone desire, or present desire to be heard on bond ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-five? I'll turn it over to you, Lou.
Okay, Micah, do we have anyone sitting in WebEx there wanting to make comments about the bond ordinance? And also, for the record, in the advertisement for the bond ordinance director, it also called for written comments that could be submitted to public@passaiccountyNJ.org, and there was no, no submittal that way, as Micah checks.
I have no questions in the Q and A, no notes in the chat, and no hands raised.
I would make a motion to close the public portion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner Deputy James, I think.
Yep.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazar?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes, I'll take a motion to adopt bond ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-five.
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazar?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes, motion to resume the regular order of business.
Move it.
Motion made by Deputy James, second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazar?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes, Deputy Director James, I believe you have a report.
Just briefly, there was a very interesting show on Sixty Minutes on Sunday. It had to do with people with disabilities, particularly autism, and how folks with autism are making a big impact on some of our largest companies because they are very uniquely positioned to find things in great detail and repetitive. They think in a different way, which fits the corporations that are using it. And they have found things that others wouldn't have found and saved these companies millions of dollars. So some of it is how the companies are taught to interview, because they interview improperly. If they don't get the response that they want within the first minute, they turn off to that candidate for a new job. So I think I'm going to talk to our whip board, because we have a disabilities committee on that, and take a look at that Sixty Minutes program and start to advocate that we change the model of how companies interview for key jobs where these people fit the ball that that company actually needs. The trick is to get them through the interview so they actually see what value that person has. And I think that's a no-brainer. I think that we can make sure that some of our people get hired in the jobs that they are uniquely qualified to do better. Okay.
Director, you know, Bruce, you and I went over to Bergen County and were quite impressed with that program over there. You know, it's like every good thing, if we don't keep on, falls by the wayside. So I would say to you, maybe we should start that up again, take another look. Whatever I can do to help out, please, let me know.
Yeah, well, I'm going to see if I can get a copy. Yeah, well, I'm going to see if I can get a copy of that, that program, so that everybody can watch it, and then take it up and start looking at what we can do to attract, I'll talk to Debbie, what we can do to attract businesses, to look at those individuals in a different way, and find out that they can really add to their, their corporate bottom line in a unique way that others can't. So.
I saw that program myself, Bruce. I didn't see you in the room, though.
I wasn't. I safely watched it from home.
Okay, on that note, thank you, Deputy Director James.
I'm going to mute myself.
There are no communications. I'll take a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
I'll move it.
Motion made by Commissioner Lazara?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call. Roll call.
County, County Commissioner is Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapour?
Yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard? I'll turn it over to you, Lou.
All right, Director, we have received two emails at public, public at PassaicCountyNJ.org. The first one comes from Renee Alessio. Good evening, Passaic County Administrator and Boards of, Board of Commissioners. Please read my email into your minutes for the next board meeting. On July twentieth, I'm asking both the West Milford Administration and the Council and the Passaic County Administration and Board of Commissioners to please comment to the FERC on the recently released environmental impact statement draft. Neither the Council or Commission that I am aware of have commented on the regulatory agencies, FERC or the NJDEP on the negative impacts this project would would have on the township of West Milford and the regional region in general. I do not believe that Passaic County filed with the FERC to be an interviewer or, or I'm sorry, and therefore would not be receiving updates from the FERC. Here is an attachment in the draft of the FERC Environmental Assessment Draft and Letter of Intent from the FERC to do an environmental impact statement, as well as a link to the EIS draft. I have included the EA draft, because the EIS refers to the EA. Public comment period for the EIS draft ends August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at five PM. I'm advising the Commission to please respond to the EIS. There are many concerns. A few are the following: climate change. We are currently in a climate crisis. There is no way that we can reduce the greenhouse gases if we don't, if we, if we continue to build fossil fuel infrastructure. Methane is in the gas transported by the pipeline and is worse than CO2 as greenhouse gas. Both Governors of the, of New York and New Jersey on, as well as, as the President have committed to clean renewable energy. In New Jersey, fifty percent by twenty twenty-three, and a hundred percent by twenty fifty. Safety. Nowhere in the EA or the EIS could I find the fact that the compressor stations would attach to existing sixty-five-year-old pipeline, as well as the loops constructed ten years ago. Our pipelines, our old pipelines do not leak, and, I'm sorry, all pipelines do leak, and both the current pipelines go under the Monksville Reservoir, which supplies water to millions of New Jerseyans. That the TGB Kinder Morgan to please supply us with documentation about the pipeline inspections. And they ignored us. On-site security would only be during regular working hours. Otherwise, security would be remotely protected. We asked the TGB Kinder Morgan about cybersecurity. They did not have a plan, nor did they have an evacuation plan for those living above the proposed site, where there are many residents, businesses, and youth camps. Burt Meadows Road is a dead end. There's only one way out, and that is past the proposed site. We are also concerned that even with training, our first responders would not be able to handle a major industrial fire. Air quality in New Jersey, although improved, still has poor air quality emissions from the compressor stations and negative impact accumulating quality in our air and added to our health concerns. Real estate. We have heard from the property owners and potential buyers who have said that they will not build by property near these compressor stations. I was at the Sussex County Commissioner meeting recently, and property owners in Wantage living near the existing compressor station already have issues during blowdowns. TGB Kinder Morgan passed record. FERC does not take into consideration the poor safety record of TGB Kinder Morgan. TGB Kinder Morgan can tell FERC and the New Jersey DEP that they will follow the necessary regulations imposed by these agencies. But they, that does not mean that they will, and they have a poor record of mitigation, including in West Milford. Many of these large corporations find that fines are just part of doing business. The taxpayer is often left with the bill if something goes wrong. I do not believe TGB Kinder Morgan will be bonded for the potential of any future damage caused by these pipelines, compressor stations, or equipment. Um, as far as I'm aware, bonding is usually temporary, period only. We are putting together a more thorough critique of the EIS before the comment period ends. You're, you may contact me if you have any questions. Thank you, Renee Alessio.
Okay.
Next email comes from Margaret Wood. She asked that our comments be read into the record. Dear Honorable Passaic County Commissioners, I am Margaret Wood, three twenty-four Germantown Road, West Milford. I oppose the fracked gas compressor station proposed at West Milford in Wantage. At your last meeting, I said, we know, we now have two TGB pipelines running side by side. One is sixty-five years old, the other is ten years old. The old pipeline is fifteen years past its engineered lifespan. It is unsafe and carries toxic volatile organic compounds that leak out every, every corroded hole and seam. We must demand that the old pipeline be removed. Once removed, there will be no need to build two more compressor stations. The existing compressor stations that are, that, that are supplying two pipelines now are more than enough to supply just one pipeline itself. I would like to talk about a peer-reviewed scientific paper toward a better understanding and qualifications of methane, quantifications of methane emission from shale gas development. It take, it talks about the leaks that occur during the production of fracked gas. These leaks cause extreme global warming. Is the total amount of leaked gas in greater, is greater than three point two percent? Then using gas energy will cause more global warming than coal. The science, the scientists flew a plane full of test equipment over the Marcelo Shale in southwest Pennsylvania to, to measure how much gas was leaking. They took measurements and calculated that the total leakage was between two point eight and seventeen point three percent. The best wells were almost as bad as coal for the global warming. The worst wells were over five times worse than coal. If you, if you're, if you average this, this is, this looks like fracked gas creates three times more global warming than burning coal. Fracked gas is worse form of energy except for, for nuclear. We had, we had a hundred and thirty-three degree heat wave in the United States last week. The weatherman said it was the hottest record temperature anywhere in the entire ever in recorded history. We will perish if we do not stop the race in global warming. Please do not, please don't enable the frack gas industry. If you are not fighting it, then you are enabling it. Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me today. Unite together, we survive. Sincerely, Margaret Wood. And then she submits this towards a better understanding qualifications for methane emissions for shale gas development that we'll submit into the record. On, Micah, do we have anybody waiting to speak?
We presently have no messages in chat, nothing in the Q and A, and no hands raised.
All right, that's the time I'll take a motion to close the public portion.
I move it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James?
Second, second.
Second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapour?
Yes. I want to thank Ms. Alessio and Ms. Wood for their comments. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have our Deputy County Counsel, Nadej Awater. Do we have any late starters? Do we have any amendments? Do we have any need for executive session?
We do have two amendments, Mr. Director. Through you, there are two amendments. The first one is Resolution Number Seventy. This resolution is being amended to reflect the correct bid number in the body of the resolution. And the bid number is C dash twenty-one dash zero one six. The next, the next amendment is Resolution Number Thirty-one. This is being amended to reflect the correct title. The title that's on the agenda is incorrect. So the correct title is Resolution Authorizing Award of Contracts to New Jersey Community Development Corporation for the initial term of August first, twenty twenty-one, through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, with one one-year option to renew pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash four point one expect. That's all, and there's no need to go into executive session.
Okay, I'll take a motion to add amended resolutions oh thirty-one and oh seventy. Motion made by Deputy James? Second by Commissioner Duffy. Any discussion? Roll call. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapour?
Yes. I'll take a motion to for the consent agenda from oh one to oh eighty-four with amendments.
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy James?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duffy. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapour?
Yes. Under new business, I take a motion on the personnel agenda.
Move the personnel agenda.
Motion made by Deputy James?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapour?
Yes. Take a motion on the bills list?
Move the bills list.
Motion made by Deputy James, second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Director Lapour?
Yes. Any Commissioners have anything to add? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner Deputy James? Second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Best? Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara? Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapour?
Yes. Good night and good evening, everyone.
Good night. Goodbye, everybody.
Bye-bye.